Hello, I'm Jared Frye, General Manager of Medina TV, and I want to welcome you to our Candidates' Forums. We partnered with the Greater Medina Chamber of Commerce to bring you these Candidates' Forums, to give you the most information possible, to make you the most informed voter as you head into the polls this November. All candidates were offered invitations to take part in the races that we're going to televise here on Medina TV, so the candidates you see are the ones that responded to those invitations. We hope you sit back and enjoy our Candidates' Forums and look forward to seeing you at the polls this November. Joining me in the studio now is Rebecca Parkhurst, the incumbent for Medina City Schools' Board of Education. Rebecca, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
And for the viewers at home and everyone else, why don't you just take a few moments and just tell us a little bit about yourself?
I'd love to, thank you. My name is Rebecca Parkhurst. I've lived in Medina since 2003 with my husband, and we have two children. They're currently enrolled in the District in Middle School, AI Root Middle School. I have a degree in accounting, which has served me well for being on the Board in different respects. And I've worked in public accounting, I've done auditing, public auditing, I've worked at the College of Worcester's Controller. I currently work in accounting at the Greater Medina Chamber of Commerce.
Rebecca, for the viewers at home, could you kind of explain what the role of a school Board member is?
The role of a school Board member is to represent the community. We're elected officials, and our role is to kind of work between the community as well as administration. It's important that we represent the values of our community, but we also need to make policy, and we're also tasked with hiring the superintendent and the treasurer for the district.
So I guess as you look at that, and you led me perfectly into my next question, do you see yourself as a school Board member as more of a representative of the community or more of the administration?
Oh, definitely a part of the community. It's our role to hire effective administrators. They know much more than I do. They have the degrees and the experience and the education. But we do need to value and understand what the beliefs of our community is and what they're looking for. I think that's why it was important when we were looking to hire a new superintendent that we had community forums and we had community chats. We wanted input from the community, what are they looking for in their next superintendent? That was very important to us as a Board.
Right. And then I guess as you look at that as a Board and then also as yourself as the candidate, what do you see as your priorities, I guess as yourself as a school Board member, for the upcoming year? And then we can kind of look maybe big picture as a second part.
Sure. Well, my immediate priority is we have elected a superintendent who worked with the community to develop a strategic plan, and we need to move that strategic plan forward. I'm really excited in the direction that the district's moving. We need to keep moving forward, and the strategic plan in conjunction with passing our levy, which that might be going on here in the second part, but we need to get this levy passed, that's the upcoming levy that's going to be coming up, and we're trying to get it on the May ballot, get that passed so we can do what we want to do with our strategic plan. It aligns greatly the five-year plan with the levy.
And yeah, what levies will be a question in a moment, but I guess for first, just to kind of backtrack, is I guess kind of explain to the viewers or the voters your previous experience with the school Board.
Yes. So I was appointed in 2015 to fill a vacancy, and in the last two, almost two and a half years now, I've worked with a wonderful Board. We are still a very young Board. I think the Board member is Mr. Cahill that has the most experience is leaving after only five years. When we've attended conferences, we find out that there are members of school Boards who have been around for 25 years. So we, relatively speaking, we are a young Board. We have various perspectives and different backgrounds, which I think has served us well with hiring our superintendent and with making policy. So also in addition to that, there's, as being a member of the Board, we also have committees that we serve on. So I know the public knows that we meet twice a month, but there's always also various committees that we're part of. So I've served on the Finance Committee, which my experience in accounting business has served me well in understanding not-for-profit accounting and fund accounting. I've served on the Assurance Committee, the policymaking committee, and also currently as the Board Liaison for Curriculum.
So keeping very busy with the Board position, and it's a very demanding job in that regard as you just stated there, as you can talk about all the committees and the meetings. It is a time-consuming job that really takes a good effort for any candidate that does decide to run for the office.
It does. And currently also this year, I was voted by the Board to be the Vice President, so I'm serving with Mr. Eastwood. He's President, I'm Vice President, so that does take some additional time as well.
Sure. And you brought up a good point too, you're talking that you're a fairly young Board. Do you feel, obviously as you go, like you said, you go to these conferences and you hear some of the ones that have been there for a long time, but do you feel it's an advantage or disadvantage at times being a newer Board in terms of some of the decisions that you guys can make?
I think it's an advantage to us because we'll hear about some of the history or why things have been done, but we're not stuck to it. And we have these different perspectives, and we believe in change and moving forward, and I think that has served us well by being a young Board.
Sure. And in terms of that balance with a young Board, you're going to get pulled in opposite directions sometimes, whether it's what the community would like to see versus maybe what administration would like to see. How do you kind of balance that?
Well, personally, and I think this is a belief of the entire Board, it's all about the kids. So we need to figure out, well, what is best for the kids? At the end of the day, that's why we're here, is for the kids, so we have to make our decisions based on what will be best for the kids.
And one of those decisions, as always, thanks to whatever you may want to say, State of Ohio, whatever, funding. Funding's always a tough issue for a school district, and that's with the possibility of looking at levy or levies in the future from Medina City Schools. I guess what's your stance with your financial background in regard to levies and financial matters of the district?
Well, like you mentioned, you have the state funding. A lot of times, and as people have seen over the course of the last several years, our funding has been being cut. Every year, we're getting less money from the state, and who knows what we'll be getting next year. Every year, we're required to do a five-year forecast, and it's difficult at times because you don't know what your revenue sources are going to be or how much. But our treasurer has done a great job trying to do the best that he can for forecasting that out. So as a result, it's not just Medina City Schools, it's districts all across the state because of the unknown state funding levels, they're becoming more and more reliant on local taxpayers to fund the districts. So back in 2013, when we passed the last levy, we called it an emergency levy because it was an emergency. We needed to get those funds, or there was going to be a school building closed, programs were going to be dropped, we needed to have that. Thankfully, our voters supported that and passed it, and we've been able to bring back programs. We've been able to fulfill the promises that the district said they were going to do, as well as remain fiscally conservative and responsible with those tax dollars. So as a result though, that funding, levies coming to an end in 2018, if we want to continue with these programs that we've implemented and even do more, stretch our dollar even more, we need to continue that source of funding. I equate similar to, and I think the superintendent said this as well, if you have an income, two incomes perhaps in a family, and you lose one, if you want to maintain, you still have bills to pay, you need to have that job. Losing that levy would be like losing a job in your personal family.
And I guess as you look at a district, and you look, like you said, you're really bringing back courses and things of that nature for the students, which you said also is the bottom line, you try to do the best interest of students. But when you're looking at basically over, what, 7,000, little over 7,000 students in the district, how are you able to balance as a Board their interests? Because it's varied interests, whether it's music, education, sports, you pick the top. Are you able to balance that to create something that makes everyone happy, which is a very hard thing to do?
Right, it is, right. And there's always going to be someone who isn't, but we try to do the best we can. And that was great with the strategic plan initiative where we brought in community and staff, and there were surveys sent out for people that couldn't come in, so we can see what are the concerns, what does the community want, what do parents, what are they looking for, and tried to then assemble all of those things, see, okay, this is what we can focus on, this is what people want the most now, let's focus on these things for the next five years. And then after this strategic plan, we'll do it all again. Okay, now we're at this level, so now what do people want? It's important to get the input from all those different sources.
And then also, I'm sure at times with you, you're dealing with a total of five school Board members. Not everyone's always going to agree on everything. Kind of what's your opinion in terms of, do you feel everything needs to be unanimous vote, or do you feel it's okay with the political system for things, maybe be 3-2 sometimes?
I think it is. Like I think I mentioned earlier, we all have different perspectives, we all have different backgrounds. I think that we have worked well together in creating dialogue and hearing each other out, and there's times where I might think something, but then someone brings up a point, oh yeah, well, I hadn't considered that. And hopefully it's like that for all the Board members. I think that we work well together, we don't always agree on everything, I think that's good. I think as long as we do it peacefully and can respect each other in the process, which I think we have accomplished that. I know that being the only woman on the Board, I provide a different perspective as well. Also, I'm the only one that has children that are middle school age, so I have a different perspective as well that I can provide to the Board. So I think it's good, and I wouldn't want us to always be in agreement.
Sure, sure. And now another part of this is, we talked about the funding from the state and the creative ways you guys are also trying to look at levies and things of that nature, but another one is that you do a partnership with the City of Medina as well for a lot of things, which helps save the district money. Kind of explain that a little bit, the pros and cons of being able to work with the city and sometimes maybe not so much depending on what the issue is, but how's that working relationship been?
I think the relationship has worked well between the schools and the city. It's great that we have, I'm sure that there's districts that don't have a very good working relationship with the city. So I think it's great that we've been able to collaborate in different projects. I know the Rock Center is the big thing, I think that's very unique, that a lot of communities don't have a building that it's owned by the school district, but is leased and run by the city. So that is a unique arrangement, agreement that we have. Our students are able to use it, the community members are able to use it. So I think that we've done a lot of great things with the city.
And it brings a little more financial flexibility for you guys and also for the city with those partnerships.
Right, and sharing those costs, and it has worked out, I think, very well.
Now, what do you think, back to you as just a school Board member and the Office, what do you feel separates you from the other candidates that are running for this office as well?
Well, I think because I have experience already on the Board and serving in those different committees and capacities, my experience in the business and finance, and being a parent to kids in the district, I think is huge, because when we make policy, which is one of our primary roles, I can see that reflected back in what's going on at the school. So, okay, that worked great, okay, well, maybe we need to tweak this a little bit. What's going on here? So I think that makes me unique.
Sure. And I guess this is your opportunity now, I know you, I've thrown a lot of hard questions at you and you've done a great job answering, but this is your opportunity. If there's anything I missed or something you want to touch on, this is your chance to look right in the camera to the voters and viewers and let them know anything I may have forgotten to talk about or something you'd like to talk about.
Okay, well, thank you, Jared. I would just like to ask the voters to keep me in office. I've had a great experience working with the current Board members, I think we work well together, we're really excited for what's going on in the next few years with our strategic plan. We've successfully hired a great superintendent, we've negotiated contracts with our unions. I think we're in a good place setting ourselves up for getting things moving forward, keeping them moving forward. I personally have wanted to serve on the Board for a while, I've always had the desire to serve my community, and this is a great opportunity for me to do that. I've always tried to see how I can make things better. I want to be part of the solution. I think the current Board has made things better, and I would like to continue to be part of that Board.
Again, that's Rebecca Parkhurst, the incumbent member for Medina City Schools' Board of Education, and thank you for answering questions today.
Thank you for having me.
Best of luck to you here in November.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Hello, and joining me in studio at this time is incumbent candidate for the Medina City School Board of Education, Rob Skidmore. Rob, thanks for joining us.
Good morning, Jared.
Morning.
Thank you for having me out.
Our pleasure. And why don't you start a little bit for those folks at home that may not know Rob Skidmore, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running again for a school Board.
Very good, thank you. I'm a lifelong resident of Medina. I've grown up here, went to Medina City Schools. Our family, my dad had a law firm, Skidmore &amp; Hall Transfer Title in Medina, and my brother and I continue to operate those businesses. I'm active in the local bar association, I'm an attorney, I'm involved with Ohio Land Title, and we're members of the Chamber and different organizations. I've been active in the past with coaching, with soccer, and we have two children, my wife Claudia and I. I met Claudia in high school, and we have Zachary and Zoe, our son Zach is in his second year of college, and our daughter Zoe is a senior Medina and playing on the Medina Girls' Soccer Team right now, and they're having a great season. So we're enjoying her senior year and running for school Board. So thank you for having me out.
A pleasure to have you, and they are a tremendous season from the girls' soccer. They have a perennial powerhouse, it seems like year in, year out. For the viewers at home, why don't you, and being an incumbent, you can kind of help us with this a little bit, kind of explain exactly the role of the school Board and what the school Board does.
Sure. Well, the school Board in Medina is a group of five individuals who are elected with staggering terms, so every two years, there's either two of them or four running, and so it's a four-year term. And those individuals, basically through majority vote, make a lot of the decisions for the district. Now, the decisions are recommendations that are made by the administration, and they're hiring people that the administration recommends, and looking at those things, there's involvement with the administration with strategic planning and different processes. We all serve on different committees within the district, and we're active that way. The big things we do are hire the superintendent and hire the treasurer, because we are directly involved in those functions. So those functions, we take very seriously, and we had the privilege of that over this last four years. And that was a very solemn task to really try to do the best we could, to try to listen to the community and try to get the best people we could in those positions. And then, you know, we look at financial forecasts, we look at the funding for the district with our treasurer, and those are a lot of the things that are involved with the Board.
Great, good explanation. Now, as you look at that, one of the questions that kind of pops up there, how do you, I guess, see yourself, are you more a representative of the community, or do you see yourself more as a representative of the school system?
Well, I try to balance that, because we do need to have a partnership. And, you know, there's times where, you know, it's good to call up a friend and say, what do you think about this? Because sometimes you get so into such a small group of people that you're listening to that you don't maybe go out, you need to get out a lot and listen to people, and that's what we try to do. We do, we are representative of the people of the district, however, we still have to make what's in the best, the decisions that are in the best interest of the students of the district. So sometimes you have to balance that. We always try to keep that in mind, that we're representatives of the district and for only as long as they keep us as Board members. And, you know, there's a vote this time in the fall, so we are cognizant of that, and we try to be as careful as we can with purchases and with decision-making. I know we had to buy turf this year, and I remember thinking to myself, well, I guess we could go back to grass, but then you realize how many people benefit from that turf, and hopefully we can continue to locate sponsors. I know the administration's working to try to do that, but those are big decisions that you make that, you know, are a half million dollar cost to do it, and it's important because a lot of people benefit from it, and you have to balance it with the other purchases that are done in the district. So there's a balancing act with that.
Absolutely. Now, as you look at that, and you said it's the balancing act, and you got to try to figure out what the priorities are, what do you see as a priority heading for the school Board or the district for this coming year? And how do you, I guess, how do you select these? I mean, is it committee-wide, some things that might be a personal agenda for yourself in terms of the district, or how do you see it?
Well, it's definitely not a personal agenda. I've set up for myself, not just for the next year, but for the next four years, priorities that are part of, and they really tie into the district at this point. So one is passing the levy next year, where we have a five-year emergency levy that expires at the end of 2018. And the plan at this point is to pass a levy that would give us the same amount of dollars on a permanent basis, and that's very important for us to do that, to give our district financial stability moving forward, and to be able to adequately fund the activities and continue busing and the things that we brought back four years ago that were promised in the last levy campaign. I want to continue to hire the best people and maintain the current district leadership. We have some great leaders, our superintendent, Aaron Sable, our assistant superintendent, Dr. Qualick, who does just an enormous amount of work behind the scenes to keep the district running smoothly, our treasurer, who does a great job in his role to continue to implement the five-year strategic plan, which was a partnership with the community, to have different committees looking at academics, looking at finances, looking at different things within the district. And one of the things that came out of that is to fund all-day kindergarten. And Brunswick currently does that, and it's helping their third-grade reading when they get them in all day at kindergarten. And there's a cost to that, I think, it's over a million dollars, because we were charging tuition for, if you went all day before, getting a waiver from the state. We had a waiver for probably four or five years, but now it's time for us to go ahead and implement that. And so I think over the next year or so, year or two, the district will be implementing that, which will, you know, give a lot of benefit to young families in our district and also give a lot of, especially benefit to the students in our district to get them started and down the path toward excellence in education. The repairs, the district, we have a list of items that need to be done, there's still some schools we'd like to get air-conditioned and things like that. We, right now, just don't have the finances for that, so we're trying to balance that as I discussed earlier, but we have to continue to look at those and continue to prioritize and implement those. And then the last is just keeping the students as our top priority. That's really important for us to do. Our people, our top priority for us as well, to take care of our people in our district that work hard for the students, but ultimately, the students and what's needed for their education is what we try to keep as our top focus.
Yeah. Now, you brought up a lot of those bullet points, and I'm going to kind of try to tie them all together, because it focuses on financial stability. You look, as you mentioned, you guys look to do a five-year strategic plan, you're looking at current levies that are either coming off or you might need to renew, or look at additional levies, but then you also deal with the State of Ohio. You never know what's going to happen with them. How do you juggle all of those aspects and still be able to come out with a forecast or a way to project out for the future for Medina City Schools?
Our treasurer's done a very good job at that the last couple of years, and we do continue, I know a couple of years ago, there had been a budget that our governor vetoed that directly impacted districts like Medina, and we had some funds taken away. And I know Mr. Hamley and Mr. Obhoff helped to bring back some of the funding for our district at that point. We haven't gotten all of the funds for the tangible personal property tax back that were taken away several years ago as the commercial activity tax was implemented. The commercial activity tax just does not generate quite as much as the tangible personal property tax did. But we, you know what, we can focus on that, or we can focus on the fact that we do have a lot of funding. We've kept a majority of our funding, and we continue to have growth as far as housing in this area that helps to continue to bring in funding for the district, so there's a lot of positives there. And I think, you know, sometimes a state looks at our community like Medina and says, well, they have the ability to do certain things for the students, and the community of Medina has chosen that education is a very high priority for our area, and that's why a lot of families choose to move here. And so people, a lot of like-minded people say, our schools are important, doggone it, we're going to support them. And that's the way it was when I grew up, and I hope it continues to be that way, I hope that's why people continue to decide to move here. So, yes, and I did go down for the legislative day, I think it was in March, and we had meetings down in Columbus, and we got to go around the legislators' office and continue to remind them. We had probably six or seven pages of bullet points that were given to us by Ohio School Board Association, and funding is a big part of that. The other thing the district has done is join the Alliance for High-Quality Education, and we did that over the last four years, and so we're affiliated with other districts like us, and we can do a little bit of lobbying at the state level that way and say, hey, districts like Solon, like Medina, that are similar in many ways, we need to look at that with the state to make sure that we continue to get adequate funding. So that's important to us. I know some people would like us to maybe do more than we do with that, and that's difficult, given that we all have jobs and also have the positions with the school Board, and there's quite a bit of material that we have to digest as we prepare for meetings. So we try to balance all that, but when we have the opportunity, we do pick up the phone or go to activities and say hello to the legislators and try to continue to have a very good relationship with them. So, thank you.
And this officer, this position, does require a lot of balance, and I think, as you just mentioned, dealing with state and local and everything like that, but what about the balance that you have to weigh as a school Board member with administration wishes versus community wishes? How do you create that balance and how do you make that work?
Well, we've had just a few instances of where we've had maybe differing thoughts, and it's been rare. I know that, you know, we had it with, and I don't necessarily want to get into the examples at this point, but the administration does a great job at coming up with recommendations, and I know they put a lot of time and thought into them. But sometimes when we hear from the public and the public says, hey, guys, you know, you're not thinking about something with this, and we may say, hey, let's revisit something, let's look at it, let's give some more thought to it. That's rare, because most of the time, we're going with the recommendation that the district has, but again, there are certain occasions where, you know, certain programs that are hallowed within the district or things like that. I know as a school Board, we decided we didn't want to really do retire, rehire with teachers, and I know that was an issue that came up, and we just feel that that's maybe not a direction that we wanted to go, and I know that was kind of the Board saying that. But I feel that the public kind of agrees that that's, you know, if you've had a career in education, that once you retire, that you move on and let others come into those fields, and we feel strongly that going down that way was going to get us into problems in the future. And even though it may have made a great reason to do it for that particular instance, although in that particular instance, it's worked out well with what's happened, and we're happy with the district, and so those are some tough decisions, and you get a lot of people that have opinions with it, and we have to make sure that we listen to everybody, and we do care about everybody's opinions, but ultimately, sometimes you have to make tough decisions. So that was one in particular that was a tough one with the retire, rehire.
Yeah, and it's always a tough balance, and that's why I wanted to find out from you exactly that. And as you look at, of course, you have previous experience here with the school district and being a Board member, an incumbent, but what is some experiences or expertise of yourself that might set you apart from some of your other candidates?
Well, I think, you know, when you go to law school, they really train you with analytical thinking, and I remember when I started law school, the dean said, okay, you will never think the same way after you start this process as you did before, and there truly is a method to it that causes you to be able to argue whichever side that you need to argue or that you're asked to argue. And so you try to keep an open mind, you go into things, but yeah, there's a lot of times where there's maybe, well, have we looked at this, or did we look at this point? So there's some, there's some aspects of being a devil's advocate occasionally that help with that, but we try not to overdo that, obviously, but it is important with the contracts that we take our time with them, that we look at them carefully. I've appreciated, there's been several times where the district has hired outside counsel. I know we maybe did it with the cell tower, we did it with, recently with the TIF with the school, with the city, we had outside counsel look at it. We have outside counsel look at our contracts for our superintendent and our treasurer, and we have, we have a general counsel with Mr. Shields, and there's a lot of things that Mr. Shields does for us, that he's a very good attorney, and he's a great resource with the human resources throughout the district. But again, there are times where there's, we need a particular expertise, whether it be in school law or some other areas, and I've made sure to say, let's make sure that we do that if we need to. Sometimes spending a little bit of money now can save you a lot of money later, so we try to be careful with that, and so that's an area that I feel that I've kind of been able to bring to the table with the Board. And I try to, you know, be careful to read the contracts that we have, a lot of times they're put into the Board docs, the actual agreements that we have for different resolutions we're taking. And so we had a new union contract for